Okay.
All right, let's call this meeting to order at. Oh. I don't see her.
Yeah.
There's Heather. Hey Bill, yeah.
Such a play. I didn't get any next thing.
Remember with Heather? Heather, she can hear me? Yeah, she has to state her name if she's gonna put anything out in the vote box. The vote, she has to have it drew it. And then vote, alright.
Heather, are you there?
Bill, we'll switch agendas because those are two attendees that wouldn't move.
I am here.
All right, hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thank you for asking.
Yeah, so John just mentioned that if you, if you vote on anything, you've got to state your name first before you actually say I. Or 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 may.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yep. Bill, howdy. Get your weather, add this weather gear on there. What's Matt working on?
Hello.
Hello.
Okay. It is seven oh six. And we will open the hearing of the Bakersfield Planning Commission for March eighteen twenty twenty four. And we have an agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have nothing.
Okay.
You folks are all on on the agenda? You're part of that, yeah.
Yeah, they're all part of the same one.
Okay, good.
And then we'll introduce ourselves. Let's start online.
I'm Ken Carter.
Heather, if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Heather Julie, County Commissioner.
Thank you, and we'll start.
Ken Carter.
Bill Lingley.
Nikki Cribb.
Tammy Brennan.
Great, thanks. And so the hearing we have tonight is the Gates Vincent Kenneson Final Boundary Line Adjustment. And I know you two are, and actually all three of you. So who is going to present on this? Okay.
We have the last.
You want, you want a copy of one of these to?
No.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, if you push that push button there, yeah, it'll be on, thank you.
So if you could just introduce yourself.
I'm Hobie Gates. One of the representatives of the Gates Farm of Lindsey Gates and Barb Gates. Um, we are just here to uh, make a line adjustment for between the Gates Farm and the Kennison's property. It's just strating, straightening out a line. Uh, there's no, no real uh, person is going to gain any more land than the other person. It's just that the line was crooked and it came into the front of our barn. And it went through on an angle. So we're just had it surveyed to have it adjusted so it straightens it out. And it doesn't interfere with the front of our barn and it also squares up their property.
The barn was on the property.
Yeah, we looked at this previously, didn't we, last year?
Yeah.
He did.
There's a lot of mail involved, if I remember.
Yeah, that was the real.
A lot of mail involved last year, if I remember, yeah.
But he had one of them parceled and he didn't have to do every parcel about it.
This is the same thing here.
Yeah.
Oh, is that how that was?
Yeah, yeah.
This makes for a whole set for you two and then I have set, Ken has a set. Yeah, well, unfortunately with the extent of your property, we had to make you go through uh, long notification process. We appreciate the trouble that that was for you and glad to see that you got it done to where we're here to actually take this up and this has been surveyed by Michael Jarvis. Does anybody have any questions about?
Straight forward.
Yeah.
Not much is changing.
That land is going to Josh and Jessica's something separate or?
That's it. That's a different parse, um, process that we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's a totally different parcel.
Yep, okay.
Which one is it you're talking about?
This piece is said is going to be conveyed to them.
Oh.
That's gonna be sold to them. And we're just waiting for our lawyers to get the paperwork and all that stuff done because that has its own separate deed and all that stuff. So there's no other than going through the legal part of it of the lawyer part of it, that's all we need to do.
You just had Michael do that while he was doing this or something, yeah.
Well, that's good, it made it worthwhile.
I don't see anything. Just, uh, I move we approve this boundary line adjustment.
All right, we have a motion by Ken to approve the boundary line adjustment. And second, that was Pammy? Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor of approving the boundary line adjustment as presented here tonight by Mr. Hobie Gates on behalf of the others that are here on the drawings, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
What?
Yeah. And I think.
Okay.
Um, Heather, do it, aye.
Aye.
Very good, so we have five to zero and it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There you go, you're all straightened.
Now we gotta wait for the lawyer to do the check, right?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
We don't have to do anything else with you guys at all.
You're gonna have to come back to make that separate parcel?
No, I shouldn't have to.
That's just, that's already existing, he's, he, him and Jessica are just buying it?
Yeah, they're just buying that parcel.
Yeah, I don't.
Separate-deeded.
And if they decide to turn it into one parcel, then you don't have to do.
Right.
And what will be the Mylar that we record?
Well, we could make it, uh, any of these three, it looks like they're all with original signatures.
Okay.
Um, this is a mile, actually, are they, okay, this is a Mylar.
Well.
And this is a Mylar, so these are materially issued. And then if you want to keep a set, so you've got, and here's the.
We got a little one of those.
There's another one for that. So all this shuffling of papers up here is, this one goes in the official.
I think you need to be happy with the recording fee. That's it. Like to record those?
Yeah. She'll send us a bill or what?
I'm almost thinking, I can't remember if it's fifteen dollars a page for a Mylar. What's your phone number, I'll have her call you.
I'll give you my cell phone, that's better, six oh three, six oh five, five five six three.
Okay, I'll have her call you because I don't know.
So this will be signed tonight and given to the clerk for filing today.
I can stop one more.
Okay.
Because I know.
She'll be ready, okay. Yeah, do that, she'll know.
Go back and work for KRO.
Yeah, she should be able to.
Well, congratulations on that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Hobie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care.
All right. So we are at the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone else on the? Okay, so everybody that remains would not be public except you, John, I guess you're a public. Okay, thank you. I don't know what we would have done if you had had a comment. All right, and I have to apologize, I did not get to go home today to do the minutes, so I'll have to put them off till next meeting. And bring them for that.
So will you do two separate minutes?
And the February fifth minutes.
So these I'll file, I'll put in the thing.
Right. Yeah, and I'll send them out to everybody. And zoning administrator is not here.
Nope.
So no zoning administrator report. Um.
Now, the reason I made that the third Monday is because we have another hearing that wants to get scheduled, Krieger. They have things that are because Derek bought the tree farm.
Really?
Larry. Yeah, Larry, um, has the house in a parcel and then Derek took a piece out of current use to build a house. So it, it's a new, it'll be a new entry. Like the driveway will change. So there's a whole thing, so they wanted to try to get in on this one, but they called like at one o'clock and the deadline was two o'clock to have it in the messenger and it was the final day. So in order to get the fifteen days, if we had it the first week of April, we wouldn't have fifteen days.
Right, and oh shoot. I have to go out to my truck to get my calendar. Um.
So there is a minor subdivision or what they're proposing, you know, or?
Yeah, I almost think.
Yeah, do you need to go get some, I'm gonna go get my phones, I just want to make sure the fifteenth is okay with me. I think so.
You know who those other people? Those other people that were, that were here tonight?
The gentleman was Andrew Vincent, who owns the house right next door to Jolly, so it's his property that's been. I'm not sure who the lady was. Must be on the signup sheet.
Not exactly. It's just a draft that we've got so far that lined up. Um, so this is the current entrance, that's Larry's current entrance, which will be closed and seated and then there'll be an entrance here that you go with Derek's, his house. And then soon, is that already there? Okay. That sounds the most pretty Larry's gonna underlist yet. I don't know. But Larry must not be coming from this, we're gonna get to his house. Which is gonna be seated.
So this is.
I guess this is gonna be lot three, two acres. And then this is the big part, and then this is lot one, which is Larry.
It's already a lot, you know, or?
I'm not sure. I'm not the. So would that be more than two?
It looks like it's potentially two, yeah, because we've got two, two new lots here.
Okay, but this wouldn't count as a third.
It would, yeah.
So that's not a mi, that's not a minor anymore, right?
It's creating three lots.
There's only, only two. I don't know, we can make a big bill.
Major, I think.
That's all, that's the three.
It's in the bylaws.
Except they're creating three lots out of one.
I've looked at fifteenth, it's good for me.
Well.
It's good for everybody else? Well, you're the one that. Hey Heather, is April fifteenth good for you?
It's a month, it's the third Monday, it would give us enough time to war.
It's the third Monday, it would give us, give us enough time to ruin.
Yeah. That, that works for me, thank you for asking, that actually would work really well.
Okay, cool.
Alright, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Um.
I'll let him know.
So I wanted to just talk a little bit about the uh, annual meeting. We had.
Mm-hmm, town meeting?
And, um, I don't remember anything about social media. But there were multiple people that recommended we do more than what we do now to warn our readings as we go into the process of revising the town plan. And.
Want more notifications or something, more awareness or?
Yeah. So.
There was requests for emails, right?
Well, somebody made a recommendation that we get a whole town email list. And then send emails to everybody, not just for our purposes, but for all purposes. I don't think that gained a lot of traction. Um, there was one that I really thought was a good idea and that was Front Porch Forum. Um, I don't know how many people follow that, but that is another avenue that we haven't done before and maybe that is useful. Um, and then the other is, um, Facebook.
The Bakersfield Community Page?
Yes. Or is anyone here a member of that?
I'm a member of Facebook, but I don't post.
I am, um, I know it can get a little sketchy there with some of the comments going back and forth. So, um, some people have just gotten to be really rude with each other on those, um, in areas. And I think it's like if we put a post up, we could just do a post and shut off the comments. So it wouldn't allow anybody to go back and forth and say you guys suck or you guys need, you know, because it gets really bad, I mean. I don't know if any.
So this conversation actually came up at the Select Board last week. Oh. Um, because it's something that I brought from that, that I took from that town meeting too. Um, and John, jump in if I misspeak, but I think my understanding is there is a town Facebook page or is that not the case?
Bakersfield Community Forum, right, but not, those are.
But nothing controlled by the town, that group made.
Right.
We, we should probably, if it's for notification, we discuss making a town Facebook page that only.
Took to the post. And I think that was sort of, it wasn't in depth, we didn't, we certainly didn't come up with any sort of conclusions to that conversation. But I would suggest if we're gonna do that, that it would be a municipal page and it could be the Planning Commission, it could be.
Town of Bakersfield.
Yeah.
We don't all want our own.
Yeah, I know. We're not able to.
To have.
Not all to do our own.
No.
We're looking to manage it.
Yeah, and I think it's key that, as Heather and Tammy said, that we, we switch off the, or don't allow.
No comments.
We don't want it to be a.
Just for notification.
Debate situation. A bright place. The other thing that I'm gonna suggest to the town, now it'd be, again, we sort of had that conversation, was having, um, an Instagram account and it would be the same thing, they're actually connected, Facebook, you post on one, you can check a box. I'm assured by my.
Yeah, very.
Child. And I've been focused, um, but I think that would be another, another way of reaching out to folks, um. Facebook, I think, is more, it's, it's a different demographic.
It's our gener, it's my generation, I shouldn't say anybody, it's the above thirty generation, forty.
Some younger people with, with Instagram and over time, I let people know we have those accounts, but that's something I'm gonna bring up at the next.
Well, if we have that account, I can put it on the homepage of the.
Right.
So. Website that says, check out our blah blah blah.
That's all I can.
I think some kind of announcement, if those people will go that way.
Yep.
Oh, I know, but anyway, that's another.
Somewhere, somewhere. That's another issue, but.
I mean, even us sharing it, once you get those posted, the members just constantly sharing it, constantly sharing it, the more that it's heard, the more that people see it, I mean, what is this saying, like you have to be shown something three times before you've even realized you saw it one time? Is it seven times? No wonder my coding classes are going rough. So, um, yeah, I think the more sharing, I'm willing to help out with that if you guys, uh, need any help maintaining those, creating and or maintaining or being admin on those. Um, I'm willing to help out with that.
So does the Select Board have a plan to start this process?
I would say not yet, but I will bring it up next Monday, I sort of indicated that I would, yes, there will be. When, yeah, when we come to the next meeting here, planning commission meeting, I would hope to have.
Yeah, so you can let them know that we're interested, that it would be useful for our revision of the town plan.
Yeah.
And eventually the bylaws and that if there's assistance from us, for us, it could be that Heather might be.
And I think, I think if, I mean, I don't know how many groups would be a part of this venture, but I think it would need to be somebody from each group who would be responsible. Thing because.
Right.
Overwhelming for one person. Um, but you can have more than one person be an administrator, I think, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
John, can you close that page down in Facebook so we can only comment? I know when you put a post on.
It's not. We don't have one yet.
No, but I mean, like when they, when there is a Facebook page created, because I'm not sure about the, how that works.
John is saying that it does not belong to the town, so we cannot close it.
Is actually two currently on.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, I meant, um, when the town gets their Facebook page, is there a way that we only post on it versus allowing other people to even post at all? Because I don't want to get into, hey, your, your roads suck, I don't want it, pictures of that, let them do that on the other one. I just would think.
Yes, yeah, so we set it up as a notification only, you could set it up that no comments can be posted on it, uh, this is.
Or a post made.
And the way you roll it out is you would kind of go to the two current pages and say, hey, the town has a municipal announcement page that all, uh, relevant and pertinent information will be shared, uh, meeting times, different topics, ba 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 ba. And, uh, you know, so that now they have a mechanism to go.
Be sure and like our page.
Yeah, they have a mechanism to see it. To, to, um, your point, we could Instagram as well. Uh, for people who subscribe, it could shoot that when you send out your update, it would shoot it to their Instagram and, you know, whatever that does notify, I don't have Instagram, so. Or Twitter, or X now, right?
X.
We're true fans. So anyhow, that's the, that was the thing, um, Nick, to Nikki's point, we, we just talked about this last week, uh, because it was something, just like you said, Bill, that we took away from town meeting day as well, some of us, some of us took away, uh, and, uh, we need to do a better job with it. I mean.
Do our best.
Yeah, putting it on the website has been historically what we do, but the voice of the, the community, as you heard that day, was the website is not really the way they go, that's antiquac and.
It's not user friendly, we just need to be more proactive generally.
Maybe they just don't think to look. Yeah. Whereas if something popped up in front of them.
Yeah, well, that's the nice thing. And, and Instagram, it pops up and tells them there's notifications.
Yeah.
I don't mind them.
All right. Good, glad to hear that there's something moving there because I think it would be really valuable to show that we've done everything we could to get people to come and participate. And maybe we, they will, we'll, we'll see.
And I'll make cookies too, so.
Yum.
Okay. Bring them here or you're gonna come there?
Maybe a little bit of both, maybe I should just buy them at Costco and deliver them right there. If I make it at my house, it might be eaten in raw form.
So when will we begin speaking about updating the town plan?
Well, I'll, um.
I had that question.
Yeah, I'll talk to Emily Klaft. The first step will be to get a grant.
Okay.
To pay for the extra hours that the NRPC planner will provide us.
Mm-hmm.
And those come out at a certain date and that'll kind of be the kickoff.
Okay.
And then we'll likely um, start as soon as we can because I think it's better to try to do that stuff early in case something starts to percolate with more hearings. You know, we had a pretty quiet few years with limited hearings. I don't know, it could turn out that the next few years, there's a lot more hearings and when we have hearings, it makes it longer night for when you do both the hearing and talk about the bylaws.
So would you do like, um, a special meeting that? And just do one dedicated just for that and then invite the community and make it a big thing for the first couple of, trying to get them excited, because I remember you were talking about that a couple of years ago, um, doing the cookies and, you know, um, trying to get people out to it, so the more people that are there, I feel like the less people will complain when I didn't know comes to play.
I, I think we'll, 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 we'll try to stay within our normal meetings, but we'll potentially have to have additional meetings, I think, well, we did it last time. Each of the last two times, we've had some additional meetings because it does get to be sometimes more work than.
Sometimes there's presentations that.
Yeah.
A little bit, you know, if we had a hearing, we wouldn't really want to have, or wouldn't want to have people here for the hearing and then have to have, you know, have a whole room full of people waiting to hear about the town plan necessarily, so.
Right.
Could be better to schedule separately.
We'll see, we'll see how things are looking when we I think the spring, summer will tell us what's gonna happen.
So you're, are you looking more towards June, i- is that when the anticipation, by the time the granting comes through, everything's written? Yes, it could be June, July?
I just don't know, I can't remember when.
Okay. No worries, I just was.
I just remember coming here when it was cold.
Yeah.
There's a lot of cold nights in this building.
What's the actual year we need to have this done for, twenty five or?
Ideally, we would present it at our meeting next year.
All right, so that's. If you remember from the last time it, wait, went fast.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably do the grant soon, we'll start in the summer and then finish in the winter. So it seems like a six-month project.
Yeah.
And, and with having the Zoom sessions open for those two, I really think that opens a door for a lot of people that previously.
Every meeting we'll do, from now on, it's gonna be Zoom.
Yeah, these are.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, um, good, I think people will have less of a reason to say they could not attend.
Right. We can get that stamped for the.
Yeah.
Oh.
Got that there?
All right, but, um, any other? So town meeting I thought was good, I thought that, uh, So town meeting I thought was good. I thought that, uh, I, I did speak to people coming to uh, participate, that it's a way to describe what you wanna protect in the town and then to create regulations, which are the bylaws through which you do that. And, um, that's what stimulated a lot of conversation about notice and trying to go through other social media rather than rely on internet.
Mm-hmm.
Or email. Yeah.
Oh, wow. John, still our moderator?
Yeah.
Yeah, they re-elected.
Wait, that?
Yeah, that one, that one.
I don't know if this is the good one.
Here, you wanna spin it on the back of your?
Yeah.
This is the.
Okay, that is Bakersfield Planning Committee.
Now, what's that? Unless Larry's law is currently separate. That's, it looks like it's a major subdivision.
Oh, yeah, so you looked at the.
I don't, I mean, they only, they're only describing two lots on this application, but but maybe it is, Larry's lot is already.
I should know the answer to this question. What is the minimum lot size once you get down to lies? Is it?
I think that's in the.
So it usually says on here what the.
Let's just talk about this next one here where.
Oh, yeah.
It's a difference.
Uh, I gotta look at the map here. Wait, wait, I don't know if they're in high density or.
They're not high density because I'm not.
It's not one, is that one?
Because I was right behind. That might be hard to see. That's old. You have a permit for the.
Oh, for the Homer Gates, the gates.
Yeah.
Is it in, um, maybe? Well, here's a permit. It's not gonna.
Yeah. I guess, you know, that's, uh, yeah. Yes, I think it's a good idea. Thank you. So we got one, but no number. See, permit number goes to the top right. Was it in a folder?
Yeah, it was in this folder.
And was that folder have a number on it?
Yep. Well, hang on, there are two folders here. What is this one? No. Good. No, there is no number. Unless it's, that's. It's not signed either.
Yeah, and taking it.
So Tammy?
Yep.
This last time we had a signing, we didn't have a permit number.
Hmm.
Do we have one?
Here.
No.
You went through a process, I think, to happy to get a permit number.
Yeah, we had Brian to assign them.
Unfortunately, we need it again.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
So I've signed it and put the date. It just needs a permanent number added to each of them. Yeah.
Yeah, find a spot for that?
What we're trying to do is get a permit number.
Right.
And.
So shall I?
Yeah, I've been getting those for some time. Yeah, if you wanna, what I'll do is I'll put this in here.
Mm-hmm.
And that way it's the same pen. And then if you don't mind, just getting, um, number and then writing it on there, you know, it'll be twenty-four oh one or oh two or something.
All right, I know, that's what I was looking for, yeah. Are you, have you made a file for this, Obi, one yet or?
I made a lot.
File for that one yet? That's, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Start, you're on it.
That's best. Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to have you folks helping us out here.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Is there, you wanna?
Pick that up in the office.
Cool.
I'm just gonna set this on my.
We adjourn this meeting?
Well, we probably should wait till.
What will be?
Tammy comes back.
Yeah, sorry.
But that's okay.
Yeah.
No, we haven't.
Ended business.
So we're ready for another action.
Okay. Let me just.
I'll go adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Oh, so we have a motion by Ken and second by Tammy. You can't beat that for showing that she actually heard one. And any discussion? No discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, have enjoyed. Gonna try and be live, be in person. We just have had a lot going on at the house, so I've been trying to keep eye on.